15th, 2020 regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Would we like to begin by calling role Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie? Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Okay, great. So what I'd like to do is start our meeting briefly with some procedural requests of our public and council, and I'll be going over these a couple of times today. They are brief. I'll have the city clerk forward a one-page synopsis, the one that I'm about to put up on the screen to our council, and we can add these to the meeting records as well. So in an effort to try to keep this timely as well as efficient, I've, in addition to the Rosenberg rules, really tried to formulate some procedures that will help us move our meetings along from there, and I'll be sharing my screen here. Let me see if I can expand this out. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Is it clear? Okay. So I only have two basic procedural requirements. First, please speak through the chair, and that would be me, or if I'm not available, that'll be Vice Mayor Chow, if she hears. And then second, don't interrupt when other people are speaking. And I think if we follow a basic procedural requirement, number one, then number two will be very easy. I'll call on people. Okay, so this is something that is effectively in our agenda, but I'd like to kind of flesh it out and give it a little bit of color. And just to make very clear that, you know, if we adhere to the order, then our meetings can go a lot more efficiently as well as effectively. First, we're going to have staff report for agenda items. The term "staff report" will include any and all reports on the item from city staff, as well as any presentations coordinated by staff, for example, by consultants as part of an agenda item. I'd like to ask that we all please allow staff to provide and direct the staff report uninterrupted. Save all your questions until after the staff report is over. Second, council questions. I'm going to see if this works, but I'm going to have the total time allocated for each council member for questions to be three minutes. There will be a timer for each council member. That time will include the time that it takes to answer the questions, be it from the staff, consultant, or applicant, et cetera. A council member can break up the time, utilizing some time initially, and asking more questions later following other council member questions, but the total amount allocated to each council member will be three minutes. The mayor will keep time initially until we have the technical capability to project all five timers on the screen. And notice, under the heading here of the time limits, I did drop an asterisk, and I want you to rest assured that there is discretion to, you know, adjust those time limits or extend them. So number three, public comment, will be after that. That will be three minutes each, as people know and understand, although that is, you know, modifiable in accordance to the amount of time that we have. I will allow interaction with staff formally, but that will be part of the three minutes. I think that makes for a much better flow with our public and the ability to address some of those concerns and questions as they're asked. After this, and this is the part that we don't necessarily follow with regularity, I'll be asking for a motion after public comment. Once that motion is provided, and the default can simply be the staff recommendation, once that motion is provided, then we are appropriately under our rules of order into the time period for deliberations. And for deliberations, what I'd like to do is to limit them to five minutes each, again, similar to the questions by the council members. We'll have a timer for each council member. You can break up your time. In the example I used, in other words, if you use one minute now, you'll still have four minutes later. And hopefully that will motivate an effective discourse, but also an efficient one. And as I stated above, the extension or adjustment of time limits are subject to the discretion of myself as mayor, but the request is to take every effort to adhere to our state limits. So I'll be going over this a couple of times before we start with some of the substance as well of our meeting tonight, but I think it is applicable to a study session as well. So thank you very much for that, and that'll stop the sharing here. We have a study session tonight on the Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness, a very, very important informational item for our public for the years 2020 to 2025. If staff would please provide the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Carrie Huesler, and I am the housing manager here at the city. We have before us the Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness focusing on 2020 to 2025. This was heard by the Housing Commission in October. This is a five-year planning document that outlines a vision for the county, and I understand that Milpitas, Mountain View, Morgan Hill, and San Jose have previously received this plan and endorsed prior to our hearing tonight. And we have our experts in the field joining us this evening. They were with us at Housing Commission as well. So I'd like to introduce Kathryn Kaminsky from the County's Office of Supportive Housing, and Ray Bramson from Destination Home, and he will be joining us on video when he can. He's having some power issues, but he is here on phone, so I'll turn it over to Kathryn at this time, and we're available after the presentation to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Carrie, and thank you, council members, for having us and making the time for us this evening. I'm Kathryn Kaminsky, the Acting Deputy Director at the Office of Supportive Housing, the County, Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing, and I'll let Ray introduce himself and start our presentation unless he wants me to do it while he's on power outage. Go ahead, Ray. I don't hear him, so I'm going to go ahead and do his portion of the presentation, so we don't delay any further. So as Carrie mentioned, this is a, the Community Plan to End Homelessness is a roadmap for our community, and it was developed by our Santa Clara County Continuum of Care. The Continuum of Care is a broad group of stakeholders that we work with to implement housing policy, to fund housing programs, and to make sure that we are aligned across the community in our efforts to end homelessness. So, you know, five years ago, as the 2015 Community Plan to End Homelessness was developed, you know, that was really the first time that we had a comprehensive, community-wide plan. Prior to that, we had many great organizations doing work to address homelessness and end homelessness, but it was disjointed, and five years ago, everybody really came together with this comprehensive effort. And we are built, this plan builds on the past plan, of which we've made significant progress in the last five years. So since 2015, we, as a community, across our supportive housing system, have helped over almost 9,000 households, 8,884 households, resolve their homelessness. Those households represent over 14,000 people who exited homelessness into permanent housing in that period. At the same time, we doubled the number of supportive housing units in Santa Clara County. We doubled the number of temporary housing and emergency shelter capacity across our county. We've launched a new homelessness prevention system that is coordinated across our prevention providers and our emergency assistance network agencies. That prevention system, at the end of 2019, was serving over 1,000 households annually and is serving even more today. We also, over in that period, led a community-wide veterans campaign that successfully housed over 1,600 veterans and engaged over 800 landlords. And of course, one of the most significant achievements that our county, that our partners across the county achieved was a $950 million affordable housing bond through Measure A that is helping develop housing now and into the future. While we celebrate those achievements and recognize our success, we also know that in that period homelessness has continued to grow. And that's because for every homeless family or individual that we have connected to housing, two or three more become homeless for the very first time because of the systemic factors. These factors include the wage disparities in our community. From 2000 to 2015, we saw wages from the wealthiest 10% increase, increased by 12%, and for that lowest 10%, the lowest-income workers in our community, their wages decreased in that same time. That coupled with the extreme costs of housing in our community are driving the increase in homelessness. So what we're showing here is that, you know, for every 30, for every 100 renter household that needs extremely low-income housing, there are 34 available. So we have a severe shortage of housing available at the lowest income levels in our, in our community. We've also, we also see extreme racial disparities in our homeless population. These are driven by longstanding racial inequities and continue to disproportionately affect who becomes homeless. So we see in our homeless population, for example, almost 17% of our homeless population is black or African-American compared to less than 3% of the general Santa Clara County population. We see these disparities also in American Indian, Alaskan Native, and also our Hispanic and Latinx community. So what we are going to do about it, we have laid out in our 2020 Community Plan, as I said, this builds on our success of the last year, of the last five years, and the last plan, but really is trying to get at some of those systemic factors that we've discussed in the last few slides. This is really our roadmap. This is a guiding plan, and it details the collective action that we need to address those systemic factors. As we were developing this five-year plan, we realized that it was really important to lay out a couple of guiding values that are here before you today. The first is that we will raise the voices of people with lived experience and share power with our unhoused and recently housed neighbors. And the second, no less important, is that we will focus on policies and programs that reduce those racial inequities and reverse the disproportionately high rates of people of color who are unhoused. These two are guiding values. We felt it important to pull those out as they're not standalone strategies, but should be reflected in all of the strategies across, across the entire plan. As we were developing this plan, we got input from over 8,000 community members via community meetings, back when we could do those in person, via surveys of neighborhoods. We met with multiple groups of people with lived experience, both people who are currently experiencing homelessness and people who had been housed in our housing system to get their input on the plan and how we should prioritize. Our plan is built on three core strategies. The first is really addressing those entrenched root causes, the economic and societal causes of homelessness through systemic and policy change. This, and while the first area aims to close those gaps in our social safety net services and address the systemic causes, the second strategy is really around building on the programs that we have developed, improving those programs, expanding those programs, because we know what, while we could, it will take time to address the systemic causes, and we need more programs available to help people get housed today. The third strategy is around improving the quality of life for those who are unsheltered. And again, while we know we're trying to expand programs, it houses more people than ever before, we won't be able to do it tomorrow, and there are still people living outside and, and living in shelters, and so we need to improve the quality of life for individuals who are outside today. So I won't go through all three strategies and all the sub-strategies, but wanted to give you some examples. The plan was, was provided to you, and we're happy to answer in detail about any of these strategies, but wanted to sort of give an overview of these, what these three areas look like. So again, the first is the broadest in scope and will require the most collaboration across our partners in the homeless system with our other jurisdictions and across private, private foundations as well. This strategy includes, for example, 1.3 is creating conditions to develop enough affordable housing to meet the need in the community. We have sub-strategies for each of these, and for example, here we have a sub-strategy to identify underutilized land across the county to be used for dense affordable housing. We also want to prioritize development for housing for extremely low-income individuals and families making 30% of the area median income or less, and set joint targets. In the second strategy, this is where we want to expand and improve our programs. We have specific targets for increasing the capacity of the supportive housing system programs. These are our permanent supportive housing programs, those long-term, deep subsidies, full wraparound services with intensive case management. We have a goal to increase to 7,000 people housed in our permanent supportive housing programs. For our rapid rehousing programs, we have a goal to increase by 10,000, or increase to, to house 10,000 people in our rapid rehousing programs, that sort of medium-term support. We also want to increase the number of people we can serve in our homelessness prevention system. We know that that, that need will be greater than ever, particularly with the economic hardships people are facing due to the pandemic. So we have set some targets for increasing the number of families and individuals we can serve with prevention. And as we do this work, we want to make sure that we're creating a state-of-the-art supportive housing system and really working with our, our neighbors with lived experience on how we develop this system. Lastly, Strategy Three, which has received a lot of focus over the, over the course of the pandemic in terms of improving the quality of life for people that are living outside. This includes things like increasing the number of shelter beds that we have available, making sure that those, those shelter beds are welcoming and are available 24/7. We want to increase street outreach services, hygiene services, transportation options. We heard that very loud and clear from people with lived experience that they, they need increased transportation options. We also want to improve and increase the mental health and substance use services that are available to people who are outside, not only in our supportive housing programs, but also people who, who may be living in encampments and shelters, and that includes increasing the number of mobile crisis teams with clinical staff to work with them. And as we do this, engaging with a cross-section of community partners will be key to make sure we're successful. So we've set some, some overall targets for this plan. These include, the first is to achieve a 30% reduction in the annual inflow. We know that we won't see a reduction in the overall number of people experiencing homelessness in our community if we don't also reduce the inflow while we're, while we're helping people achieve housing stability. And for our housing stability goal, we've set a target of housing 20,000 people through our supportive housing system. We want to expand the homelessness prevention system to serve over 2,500 people a year. As I mentioned, at the end of 2019, that was 1,000 families a year. We want to, again, double our temporary housing and shelter capacity to reduce the number of people who are sleeping outside, and as we're doing this work, make sure we're tracking and addressing the racial inequities that are present among our unhoused individuals experiencing homelessness. So fortunately, we have some work that has been accelerated over the last several months, and much of work that was already, that was underway, and our partners made sure that this pandemic we're experiencing didn't stop the work that we are committed to across the county and our partners. So just a few things that are already underway this year. In 2020, we created a centralized shelter hotline. This was specifically in response to the, the needs with COVID-19, but we are committed to continuing that shelter hotline as a centralized referral point. Destination Home, hopefully Ray can join us from Destination Home. Destination Home and Sacred Heart have distributed over 23 million. This is a few weeks old, so it's probably even more today, to over 12,000 families in the county via 70-agency partnerships. We distributed PPE, provided mobile shower hygiene services for people living in encampments when parks closed and other public spaces closed. In the time of extreme crisis, our housing system has still connected over 1,500 households to permanent housing. So even though we were charged with, with crisis response, the folks in our community continued to house folks. And then lastly, we have five temporary housing communities in development to provide, a couple of them have completed, to provide that interim or temporary housing to over 400 homeless households. This includes a project at the Civic Center, three projects in San Jose for interim housing, and Mountain View Project Room Key. So today, thank you again for having us and for your time. We're here to answer questions. We're asking for all of our city partners to endorse the plan and to consider how each community can contribute to this, the goals of this plan.
And I apologize. This is Ray Bramson. I'm hoping that you can hear me now, and I keep operating Officer Destination Home, and I do sincerely apologize. We had a massive blackout here in Santa Cruz County where, where I am right now. So I just wanted, wanted to apologize, but the, you know, kind of in summation, the one thing that we want to say and express is that every community in Santa Clara County, you're not alone, and part of this community plan is to say that we're here to bring resources, and we're here to bring support to work in cooperation with Cupertino and figure out how we can solve homelessness for all of your residents. So we're 100% committed to working with you and doing everything we can to bring more resident, more resources to the table for your residents. So thank you very much, and I apologize again for my challenge this evening.
No worries. And will that conclude our staff presentation, Carrie?
Yes, thank you.
All right, excellent. So at this point, I'd like our city clerk, because we do have one modification with regard to anyone watching this and wanting to call in to make comment, to provide that information prior to our council questions, to give some notice to the public in case they are looking to call in. Kirsten?
Yes, mayor. The dial-in phone number to access a teleconference meeting by telephone has been updated. Members of the public wishing to provide public comments by telephone may do so by using the updated phone number posted with tonight's agenda. And let me just share my screen really quickly. And I'll also provide this. Phone number dial-in is 669-900-6833, and then you enter the webinar ID 949-5234-8104. As mentioned, this is included in tonight's posted agenda.
Very good. So at this point, I would like to open it up to council. If anyone has questions, please, please raise your hand on your, on your Zoom. Let me see. And I noticed that Councilmember Willie has his hand raised. John, take it away.
Yeah, so this is for questions, but first, I have to say, excellent presentation. So, so well organized and meaningful to, to help us understand. The question that I would ask is, you know, trying to get down to where the rubber meets the road. I, I see the, the overall big picture that the, the problems and things that we've got, but how about some more about the actual details about the actual homeless themselves? An idea of how many of these homeless camps are in the area? What do you consider our area, you know, all the way from Morgan Hill to Palo Alto, or in that area, how many homeless camps? How about the individuals that are living in their cars that might need something different than the ones putting up their tent on, on some land? Can you, can you give us some feel, realize you can't give us too much detail at this time, but help us put this into a context that we see day to day?
Sure. Thank you, council member, for the question. So I think the estimating the number of people experiencing homelessness is challenging, but we have a couple of ways that we look at it. The first is, is the, we conduct a point-in-time count every two years. The last point-in-time count was in January of 2019, and there were approximately 9,700 individuals experiencing homelessness at the time of that count. And under, under 2,000 of them were sheltered, which means the majority of people experiencing homelessness are living outdoors. I don't have the number of encampments, but in our community, we have a high number of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness, so they're living outside, which is why we have some targets around increasing the number of shelter beds for that sort of immediate safety of sleeping indoors. And then there's a second part of your question that I'm forgetting, Ray.
The council member you were asking, I believe, about the differences in folks that are maybe living in encampments and people that are in vehicles, just the different types of populations we're thinking. There's, uh, there's three primary responses that we have for homelessness in our community. One is permanent supportive housing, and that's for, you know, what we call chronically homeless individuals, and that's people with a physical or mental disability who really are going to need a lifetime subsidy and support, because they're not going to be able to re-enter the workforce, they're not going to be able to meaningfully make enough income to survive here because of the disability. For another really large portion of the population, we have a rapid rehousing intervention, which are folks really that are just very, very poor, extremely low income typically, so that's 30% or less of the area median income, and those are people that are just, you know, they've economic circumstances, financial emergencies, health issues have led and pushed them to the streets. And for them, what they really need is affordable housing coupled with a hand up, so some short-term subsidy, and we see a lot of people living in their vehicles in need of that rapid rehousing intervention. A short-term subsidy with a little bit of case management and support to get them back on their feet. And the last is homelessness prevention, and that's for people that are on the edge, and we know if they fall into homelessness, it's going to end up costing the community a lot more. And we have a homelessness prevention system right now that's serving about 1,500 households throughout Santa Clara County, but we know there's a lot more people in need. There's 65,000 households that are extremely low-income in Santa Clara County, too, and pretty much all of those households are one paycheck away, one financial emergency away from ending up on the streets. So it's, there's no one-size-fits-all solution, but you're absolutely right that there's a variety of needs on the streets, and we're trying to figure out what we can do best for each, each individual.
Thank you very much. That went over a little bit on the three-minute timer. I'm going to ask that the video department keep the timer running when questions are being answered for our council member questions portion. I see that Councilmember Moore has her hand raised. Kitty?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you also for the report, and I really appreciate the table showing the work underway, and I hope that the city can post this. I know we get a lot of questions about what's being done and if we're making progress within the county, so I really appreciate seeing that there is progress being made. And also, you are including RVs, I would assume, with, you're talking about people living in vehicles, so you have people in RVs as well. Okay, with the, you're trying to get a 30% reduction in the annual inflow, are you, I think that's going to be quite a challenge with the coming reduction in support that we got during the pandemic, and is that something that you are thinking is going to be, you know, super challenging to, to meet? That's one question. And then early on, there was a comment about creating the conditions to develop enough affordable housing to meet the need in our community, and the suggestion was to identify underutilized land across the county to be used for dense affordable housing development. So I'm curious what the definition And uh the suggestion was to identify underutilized land across the county to be used for dense affordable housing development. So I'm curious what the definition of this underutilized land is, and then um just let us know some good news about where this, the funding would come to build it. Thank you.
All right, I'll I'll start, I'll start with the back and work my way through. And like, KJ, maybe when we get to the inflow, you can jump in. Um, so the good news about the funding and resources is a, some of you may have seen the news, but re, uh last week, um in partnership with a CDFI, a community development finance institution called Lisk and Facebook, uh we launched $150 million uh Community Housing Fund, which is for the sole purpose of the creation of deeply affordable housing. Um Destination Home put in a commitment of $5 million to secure $50 million in support, uh $50 million specifically for Santa Clara County. Um, we'd be happy if you have, if there are sites or in developers that are interested in building deeply affordable housing to make sure some of that resource gets here uh to the city of Cupertino. So that's one resource that we can offer immediately, and we have, you know, and it's ready to go now. So we're, we're, we're happy to partner, we're happy to look at at any site, any parcel. Really, it's the identification of where, it's the question, but there there are resources on tap. Coupled with that is Measure A, which is another funding source. Um, ju, going further beyond that, I think we underutilize is a broad definition, and we're really willing to look at whatever makes the most sense for a given community. Sometimes it's a vacant parcel, sometimes it's an old commercial building, sometimes it's buildings that just um haven't been fully occupied for a long time. So we're, we're up and open. And 40,000 requests for help in our COVID-19 financial assistance program, so the need is overwhelming.
Very good, thank you very much. Uh, does anyone else have questions on council? I don't see any other hands raised. If you want to raise your hand physically, I I see Vice Mayor Chow has done so. Uh Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, so um first question, on on strategy two, you mentioned that you would like to add 7,000 more uh permanent supportive housing, 10,000 more, 10 and 3,000 more, and the 7,000 more here and there. What are the current numbers? So there is a percentage, so we get some sense how much extra and how much extra funding that you would expect to get compared with past year's funding? And similarly, I have the same question regarding services. We'd like to improve their quality of life, so this is regarding strategies three, right? It's not like we don't want to, but in the past, did we have enough funding? Are we expecting the funding situation would change in the future?
Thank you, council member. Um, I I will have to get back to you with the exact numbers of how many. So what, the goal in terms of the housing is 7,000 people housed over the next uh over the next five years in permanent supportive housing, 10,000 in rapid rehousing. I can tell you our average of number that we've been housing over the last couple of years has been over 2,000 households or um per year, so that combined 20,000 um over the next five years is an increase. Um, in terms of the funding, you know, uh the, the, we are looking at every funding source available and max to try to maximize resources, and some of that comes in the form of development, some of that comes in the form of services. So there's targets for increasing the use of medical services to provide support for people um and those types of strategies. But this is, again, is a, these are stretch goals, and so there are, we will need to to identify more funding to be able to meet these targets.
So you don't really have a a total dollar amount for now um that you expect to have? Okay, that's fine, you can get back to me. So next question is, what about people who simply don't want to be housed? Some people, they just like the open air, and they don't want the restriction of living in a house. And the fourth question is uh on how would the funding for homeless programs encroach on funding for disability, people with disabilities? They need the uh services and housing also.
So in terms of your first question, what we know is when we ask people during that, that our point in time survey or point in time count, we also conduct a survey and ask people if they would be willing to accept housing if it was available. Um, and and the vast majority of people, um over 85% say yes. So so in terms of people want, the people experiencing homelessness today want to work with us and want to be housed. Um, in terms of encroaching on funding with, for people with disabilities, we certainly want to, we do not want to encroach on anybody else's funding source. We're not proposing to take funding from other, other funding priorities across the county, but rather increasing the funding in total and partnering with those individuals to make sure people with disabilities are also housed.
But the county in the past did take away funding from people with a disability to fund homeless, I think.
Okay, I'm going to cut you off.
The other 15% still need some solution, right? Even if
Please adhere to uh the chair. I I'm uh, and I cut off if there is a desire for additional time for questions. I I might grant that, but let me allow a council member Way to ask her questions at this time. Uh, council member Way.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Darcy. Okay, so my question is, first, thank you Catherine for your detailed presentation. My question is, I think the most, the biggest challenge for building of affordable or uh, you know, supportive housing is land. So what are the specific measures or actions you are seeking land in our county? Are there, um, you know, what, what other way, what ways are you doing it?
I'm sorry, council member, could you, are you asking about land? Like how we're going about
Yes. I think the, the
Yeah.
Challenge is requiring you underutilized land or like identifying land. What are the specific actions that you are taking?
Yeah, so there, there's been, in every city, it it varies, it varies considerably depending on what the city's will and interest is. In uh in San Jose, for instance, uh they have small, underutilized parcels of commercial land. Um, so in that case, we worked with the city to create a one and a half acre rule, which allows for the development of 100% affordable uh housing on underutilized commercial land that is, that sitting dormant and not being used. Um, in other communities, what what we're seeing is we're seeing a great upswelling of interest from the faith-based community. And churches, uh synagogues and all sorts of places of worship tend to have sites where they have a small church, but they are overparked and have incredible space. So there's a bill working its way um again through the legislature this year called SB 899, which is designed to allow 100% affordable housing to occur by right on uh on places of worship. So we're interested in working with communities to figure out land, use tools and new legislation at the local level and at the state level to make whatever sites are available. Because the big problem is, as you pointed out, we have a scarcity of residential land throughout the entire county. But there is other places where we think affordable housing can occur, and we're looking at every, we're leaving no stone unturned.
Okay, excellent. Um, so I'll ask my questions, I'll try to be brief so that we can uh keep within the uh public expectation of time. Good questions. Um, my, my question has to do with getting the word out. It seems like this is a very um effective and good forum uh for raising awareness, and also seemed that a lot of the issues that you raise are are awareness-driven. Um, in in order to uh deal with such a multi-pronged problem such as this one, it is very important to get the uh buy-in of members of the community. And so I would expect that forums like this are very valuable. What other suggestions do you have um in in order for us to get that word out uh and to try to work cooperatively with yourselves and the larger community uh to help to uh address this problem? Uh, the other question I have is uh related to that. Um, I I was particularly interested in your comments on racial inequities. Um, and and what would you say are some of the more important things to keep in mind? Is it outreach, is it awareness raising, or are there other um, you know, things that we could be perhaps supporting uh to help uh balance out some of those inequities uh in this uh in this very severe problem? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, those are both great questions. Um, you know, for the first part, you're absolutely right. Awareness raising is a huge, huge part of the work, and it's something that we believe is a critical focus. Uh Destination Home is funding an initiative called Housing Ready Communities, and it's designed to do exactly that. We go to communities and we provide presentations very similar to what you saw today, but more specific to a local community and to a local community's needs. And we work with neighborhood associations, we work with uh service clubs, we work with church groups, anyone, anyone who's interested in work on educating the community and letting them know about the issue of homelessness, what's going on to address the challenge and how they can participate and be a part of it. So we're happy to share information um with your city staff. I mean, you have a great city staff, by the way, I just want to throw that in, I didn't get a chance to say that, but really, an amazing team. Um, uh but we uh, so Housing Ready Communities is an initiative that's available to you. It's something that we're funding and we're happy to bring to your city uh anyway and anytime you want. Uh, the question racial inequities, it's a much larger question, but it ties back to this earlier challenge that we were discussing about reducing the influence homelessness by 30%. But the reality is, we have a disproportionate number of people on the streets who are people of color. You know, for for African-American population, we see six to one. Um, for Native American, we see nearly 10 to one. So we're seeing, we're seeing communities of color being pushed out on the streets in just i- in numbers that don't make any sense. So we need to look at these upstream systems like the foster care system, criminal justice, health and hospital, and figure out what strategies and solutions we can bring to the table there to help address some of these challenges in the next five years, and that's a major goal of the community plan.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, only six seconds left in mine. Uh, huh, you had 48 seconds left. Um, we have about a minute or so, is there anything that you wanted to follow up on? If not, I noticed that um perhaps Vice Mayor Chow or Councilman Moore had her hand up again.
Yeah, no, I'm good. Thanks, Darcy.
Is there a quick follow-up? Uh, council member Moore, you have your, your hand up.
Right, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about um, just real simple, how incarceration leads to homelessness. Um, I know that we have had some homeless in our, in our community who um have criminal records, and I was kind of curious what your, just general comments on that. And I, I'm well aware of the, the um inequity in the criminal justice system, but I'd like to hear your words on it.
Yeah, so I think there's, it's, it's a complex, a great question. I think, one, we know that people with a criminal history or criminal background may have have more challenges getting housing, have more challenges finding economic stability in terms of uh a living wage. Um, and we also know that that people living, simply living outside are often um, they're, they are often become part of the criminal justice system because of their, because of their homelessness. Um, so it, I think it's both of those issues, and if we can reduce the number of people of color in our, in our criminal justice system, but because we know those disproportionality exists, we will also potentially be reducing the number of people experiencing homelessness that are also people of color.
Okay, and and also, do you have some success stories about um unemployment, um, you know, some case studies where you, you know, where things are really working and you're getting people, you know, who who have criminal records jobs?
Yeah, I
Yeah, we, we have, go ahead, Catherine, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to talk about Destination Home Employment Initiative. The uh Destination Home has launched a a successful employment initiative that is working with, with people experiencing homelessness to, to match them with the training they need and the support they need to enter the workforce at a living wage with a goal of not just um, not just a job for now, but a job that will be a career and has has had success over the last couple of years with that initiative, specifically working with our homeless population. And oftentimes, we pair those with our rapid rehousing resources to make sure people have the housing support they need while they're working on employment training um and career development.
Okay, we have a follow-up question from uh council member Chow. Uh, I I just want to um remind everyone to try to a- adhere to these uh limits of time. I know it's very uh difficult sometimes to get into these very multifaceted, multi-pronged issues. Um, but but, you know, please try to uh stay within that. And so um, uh Chair recognizes uh Vice Mayor Chow, if you have a a brief follow-up question.
Hmm, I think maybe I should ask after the public comment.
Okay, so we uh, we do have a period of time for council member comments following public comment. Uh, I remind you that that's five minutes, and uh thank you for holding that. Let's go ahead and go to our public speakers. Uh, at this time, I will uh very briefly um share the call-in number again. Um, let me see if I happen to have it handy here. No, I I had it on my um, maybe not.
I have it, Mayor, but I do not have the code that goes with it.
I I I don't have the um, well, I guess I have it on Word, so let me try to um share that. Can everyone see this? Um, six nine nine hundred six eight three three. Uh, and the webinar ID is nine four nine five two three four eight one oh four. And if you want to speak, uh please uh dial a star nine. Um, we have a member of the public with their hand raised at this point, and uh that is Jennifer Griffin, welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor, uh Darcy. Uh, this is Jennifer Griffin, and I have gone uh sat through the uh housing meetings that our city has had and have seen some of the speakers from today before. And let me tell you, people are very caring. We, I have been so impressed with the city's housing planners and with the county and other cities' planners. Everyone is trying so hard to come up with solutions to the housing issues. I commend everything that everyone is trying to do. It is, don't let anyone say there's no heart, everyone is trying very, very hard. Um, just to start out, I will put a shout-out, since the county and other people are here, we have a homeless camp at the um intersection of Stevens Creek and um 280. It's the southwestern corner bounded by Calvert Drive, it's been there for eight months. These are people that need caseworkers. Uh, I believe they're on Caltrans land and part of the water district. They appear to need guidance of some sort. If you all could kindly take a look at it, this is less than, uh, it's, it's probably an eighth of a mile from Tantow and Stevens Creek Boulevard. Thank you, it's Cities of Santa Clara, Cupertino, West San Jose. Um, I have a one minute thirty-three. Um, I will just say that I'm gonna, my sister-in-law in Modesto is a guidance counselor at a low-income predominantly high school in Modesto. She was raised in Modesto, she is very familiar with the students. It is turning out that she, especially during the COVID times of this last uh, during the summer and in this fall, she is employed, she goes to work, they are not in classroom yet. She is actually going out to homes to try to help people that are low-income that are her students. So I think that the schools and teachers are a great resource also. She has been called in many times to do crisis intervention. Um, she also says that the SRO officers in Modesto are absolutely the front line to helping children that are at risk in high school. So I was just putting a shout-out for that. My brother that passed five years ago was a 25-year social worker for the city of Modesto and the county, and he worked with at-risk youth. He was a firm believer in the SRO officers to intercede on the beginning if there are issues. And I think that it's very, very important that we remember that, that our schools and our social workers are some of our frontline. Also, what about housing people that are mentally ill?
Thank you, Jennifer.
What happens after agnes? Agnes is gone, where do we go from there? Thank you.
Excellent, so we'll bring it back to council. Uh, I want to correct myself, at the beginning of this meeting, I stated that this is a study session. In fact, uh, this is an action item under a special meeting. Uh, and so the procedures um uh described at the beginning of the meeting uh fully apply. Uh, we would bring this back, and prior to a discussion, uh I am going to ask for a a motion from one of our council members. If if none is forthcoming, I will go ahead and uh provide the motions. And this one will simply be um a motion to adopt resolution number two zero dash one four zero endorsing the Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness 2020 to 25. So um, if we could have a second for the motion, uh I will say that uh this is a mechanism for uh being able to effectuate discussion. And so uh there is the opportunity to modify the motion, there is an opportunity to vote the motion down. Uh, but as a procedural matter, I'd like to make sure that we have a motion on the table prior to bringing it back. But as a procedural matter, I'd like to make sure that we have a motion on the table prior to bringing it back for discussion purposes. Is there a second?
I'll second you.
Okay, very good. So I, I do also see, and I appreciate council members more and why raising your hands for the second. And I, I did hear Councilmember Willie first for the second. So the motion I've made and Councilmember Willie has seconded, I see Councilmember Moore has her hand up. And so if there's an ability to set the timer to five minutes from video and it magically appears, and I echo the sentiments of one of our prior speakers that we have an excellent city staff. Doesn't go said often enough, but it is true. So Councilmember Moore, please feel free to be in. And again, you have the ability to not use up all of your time immediately and reserve some of it for a later round of discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Paul. But really what I was trying to do was let you know that before you closed the public hearing, Leanna Crabtree did have her hand raised and she was not called on. So there is the ability to reopen that and allow her to speak, which you, you have.
Very well. I, I, so when I closed the public hearing, I did not see her hand was raised. But at this point, I will reopen that. We, I, I just want to remind everyone, when you make your deliberations, our regular meeting is slated to start at six forty five. But Leanna, welcome. And please, please begin. You'll need to mute yourself as well.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Paul, and also Councilmember Moore for seeing my hand. I will be very brief. I've sent my comments. I have sent my comments already to the Housing Commission and then also to the N-House Task Force. And my comments are not, are not terribly different. And that is, I do appreciate that you, that the committee that has worked on this comprehensive plan has received input from folks who are experiencing homelessness or are at, at risk of homelessness and heard loud and clear about transportation services, which are of course extremely difficult right now between reduced schedules and then reduced bus capacity. If you're trying to use the bus system, but very well aware that it's very difficult to count on it because you may encounter a bus that is already occupied. But I especially would like to put in a, a request for more reinforcement in favor of mobile hygiene services, including hot showers and laundry services coming to the encampments regularly. And, and also just to remind everyone that, you know, I appreciate many people worked very hard on this plan and I appreciate that there's, as Jennifer Griffin identified and others have, that there is a very, very caring community. People want to see people in safe, stable, long-term housing. That this really is a plan for humanitarian assistance. You know, the, 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 the goal here really is to get people into long-term housing. And there just isn't, we understand right now, enough resources to do that, that wages are flat or, or nonexistent. And, and, and housing costs have just continued to rise, which is really difficult. The last thing, very briefly, is you are working, council is working on a housing survey. And I, I hope that the focus of the housing survey will really address, allow an opportunity for residents to address the concerns that they have about housing, what type of housing, costs of housing, and what their housing needs are. And thank you very much for the discussion this evening.
Thank you, Leanna. All right. So I, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up. If we can reset that timer to, to five minutes and just start my, my countdown. I, I want to follow up with regard to some of comments from the public. Leanna had mentioned that we're encouraging of facilities for the homeless population. And I just wanted to give staff as well as our guests tonight, an opportunity to respond to some of that with regard to what we have been doing, what we could be doing to improve and perhaps what we as a community can be doing to help enhance those services as well. Deb, I know that staff took a, you know, considerable number of measures to ensure that certain facilities were available to a recent encampment in Cupertino. If you'd like to speak to that, please.
Just as a quick summary, the current outdoor location, the encampment, which is now located at Valco Parkway and Tantow, has twice a week debris or trash removal. It has porta potties and it has hand washing stations that are also serviced twice a week for the encampment members. We are in discussion with county offices regarding mobile showers and other such facilities because we don't have them. So we will, it's, it's a work in progress at this point.
Okay, very good. And Ray or Catherine, would you like to speak to that question as well or the comment?
Well, you know, I, I will say that Strategy Three of the community plan is really about addressing unchallenged homelessness throughout the community. Part of the work that I know that your staff is already considering is bringing back an implementation plan about how Cupertino, the needs Cupertino has and how they'd like to address them. I think that'll be a great opportunity for us to figure out what other resources the county can bring, Destination Home can bring to help you in, in the work that you need to. So if mobile, if mobile showers is the, is the focus of what you want to do, you know, we've got great partners like Dignity on Wheels, the project we helped, that's a North County provider already. So we're happy to work with you and your staff and your city to figure out how we can bring more resources online through the process of the community plan, which really calls for addressing the needs that the speakers talked about today.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So we'll pause my time at two forty one. Before I go on, so procedurally, we reopened and closed the public commentary. I just wanted to confirm that my motion is still on the table and I'll confirm Councilmember Willie's second of that motion. Is that, I see.
Correct.
Very good. Let's go to Vice Mayor Chow, who has her hand raised. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hey, a follow up on my previous question. So yeah, thank you for a great plan. I'd like to see how it can be implemented. So I do want to please get back to us on the dollar amounts that we will need to bring it to implementation. Are we going to be looking at a bond major to fund those or what could be the possible funding sources? And the second question is a follow up also, what about the fifteen percent who doesn't, who don't want to be housed? And they, we need a solution for them too. I've seen a video of Oakland. They have something called the Tent City. And it's a, it's a self-regulated, they, they do their, their own patrol, they're clean up. They actually improve the neighborhood to become safer. And, but then these, these are people who do want to live outdoors. So are you going to have a solution for them? And then the third question, the last one is, housing is only really a symptom. Homelessness is really a symptom of the bigger problem, which is the widening income disparity, which Leanna mentioned earlier. But even if we can house them, how are they going to sustain and really earn a living wage in this area? When the higher income people, population is getting higher and that's driving up the housing price. So what's the plan for that? The long-term sustainable plan? Thank you.
Excellent. There's a big, big question, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, is this time to respond to questions? I apologize.
Yes, please. It's, it's discussion. And if we would like to have questions at this point, that's, that's allowable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so Vice Mayor, I, I'll say that for your last question, the reality is people aren't going to make it here, especially very vulnerable people in regular market rate housing. So we need to build deed restricted affordable housing that has fixed rents at, at levels that people can afford. And, you know, through the two thousand and sixteen Measure A bond, which helped to build Veranda in your city, which is, I know it's only eighteen units, but it's eighteen units of extremely low income housing for seniors. We need to build more, more of that type of housing and that, and we do have money in this affordable housing bond. There is seven hundred and fifty million dollars dedicated specifically for this work. We've allocated about three hundred and seventy five, but there's more money to spend. So we, so we, we need to build more of that housing. And if we can build more of that housing, we can get people into those homes. We can make sure our seniors, disabled people, folks that have fallen on hard times have a place that they can go where they can actually get back and stabilize. And that's, that's really the key. And you, the byproduct of things like the Tent City that you mentioned is really for the fact that people just cannot find a place to live. And we, more than anything else, know and we've seen in our system, over ninety five percent of the people that we've housed, and we've housed fourteen thousand people over the last five years, ninety five percent of those people have stayed housed for a year or more. So we know this is an approach that works. We know that it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. But if we get people in the right type of housing with the right level of services and support, we know people can really thrive.
And if I could just very briefly add, Vice Mayor, your question related to individuals who, who don't indicate they're ready for housing. You know, that's a one point in time. We have a specialized outreach team that works with people who have been more challenging to engage and they've seen tremendous success and just repeated engagement and continuing to work with people on the barriers that they're facing in engaging them in the housing system. And we want to expand those types of efforts for that population that may be not ready at that moment in time.
And then to try and address the Vice Mayor's first question is that the summary of needs that you were talking about, including funding, will be kind of outlined in the city's next steps in our roadmap that supports this, this strategic plan that the county has put together.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Chow, if you're done, you still have about half a minute. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
Okay, thank you. And I certainly appreciate that this has changed from two thousand and fifteen where you mentioned that there was a disjointed effort, whereas now we have a more comprehensive plan. And I certainly appreciate that. Also, looking at taking care of the foster youth, previously incarcerated, the veterans, I was shocked to see the sixteen hundred veterans on there. I just quickly looked up some information because I had a unfortunately positive belief that the VA was providing better assistance than what's actually happening. So I'm, I'm glad that that is being worked on and also the assistance to get to a, a living wage. And I certainly am wanting to endorse this plan. And I see we are also running out of time on this item. But thank you very much and I am in support.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And for being succinct, you do have four minutes remaining. If you choose to try to utilize it later, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, great. The first one I'd like to start is that since this is such an important issue, you know, people deserve to have a, a place to, to call home. I know I'm gonna have more questions after tonight. So what I would ask is can we get Catherine and Ray's email addresses so that we can email them, you know, after tonight with some follow up questions? So that's to start. Then I'll start in with my comments. And so I, I fully agree with Mayor that getting the word out is so important. And so what I would kind of toss out is that I think the one way to get people aware and involved is by maybe having some tours of some of these places. You've got some projects, you've got some programs that are working. And if, if the county then was able to set up some dates where they had open house and not only us on the council, but residents in Cupertino could come and walk through and kind of see what's there and maybe take a flyer away with how they might be able to contribute and help. So I'll put out that idea. The next one is, great that the county has this plan. Now, how do we in Cupertino, by the way, I'm not seeing the, the clock anymore, so I'm not really aware of my time. So the plan is out there, but how in Cupertino we'd be able to, to help? And with that, I'd like to put out for our discussion, so to speak, that we introduce a work plan item specifically to address the homelessness in Cupertino and a little bit beyond. And not put it into another work plan item where it's only a part of something else. But we make a work plan item and then within that work plan item, you know, have things like possibly helping with the Meals on Wheels in this community. The, the resident that said, you know, a mobile hygiene services unit, sponsoring maybe some trailers for short-term housing for people that fell in that type of need. And so again, the main point though is having a city work plan item that we can use and then ask the county to give us, based on their expertise, are these items that would really help or do they have better ideas on how we could help? And then those would be the items that we would put in our work plan item. So those are my comments for tonight. Great, great topic for a study session. Thank you.
Very good, John. And you're at one forty five left. And for the timer, if you put your, your view into gallery view, you'll be able to see all the various windows. Our next council member would like to speak is Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so actually, I'm very happy John went before me. I have the same questions. First, I'm very interested in the education programs. How can we educate, like our mayor says, brings awareness to our residents and even our council members and in our nonprofit organizations? So I'm very interested in bringing education programs into our community. The second is really what can our city of Cupertino do to support this, your plan? Okay, what are the specific steps that we can implement or take that you're looking for Cupertino to collaborate with you?
Okay, feel free. And just if you could pause the timer very briefly, when, when council members are deliberating, I'm just gonna give the floor to them. So if you want to ask questions of staff or, or consultants or guests, please feel free. It's basically your floor until the timer moves off. Thanks. All right.
So Councilmember, we're very happy and excited to bring educational programs to your city. We, we would, Destination Home would be happy to partner. The challenge, you know, going off of the previous council member's comments, is everything is ritual now. We want to do tours. We want to show the community, you know, these, these solutions firsthand and see how people are thriving in their housing. A little bit harder right now, but we're happy to, you know, work on virtual programs and bring this Housing Ready Initiative to you. To your second point, you know, your staff fortunately is very forward-thinking in how they want to work on this plan. And they've already been approached us about the idea of setting, setting forth an implementation plan that's specific to Cupertino. So we're absolutely committed to working hand in hand with you to develop that implementation plan. We don't know everything that's best for Cupertino. You know, our, our purview is throughout the entire region. We want to hear the challenges that you have, the need that you have as relation to homelessness and figure out how we can work together and what resources we can bring from the outside in, and then what resources you have available. So the implementation plan is going to be a partnership of looking at the strategic plan and the broad umbrella of work that it's trying to accomplish and then figuring out what we can do that makes sense for Cupertino. So we're, we're all in and happy to work, work with you in the coming year.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. So that leaves you with about two minutes and fifty seconds hung, if you wish to utilize it. I want to thank everyone for keeping on track timing wise. Vice Mayor Chow does have her hand raised. Before she goes, I will utilize some of my roughly two and a half minutes left. And I'm really glad that you mentioned that, Ray, with regard to the specificity of a community. I, I think and appreciate the fact that there are significant racial disparities with regard to homelessness rates. I, I will say that Cupertino's demographic does have a significant, what we consider traditionally minority populations. And I, I wonder whether it would be possible to pay some attention with regard to some of those cultural norms that might affect the ability to provide outreach to your East Asian and South Asian populations that might be under those types of conditions. And so I, I fully respect the fact that there are, you know, certain demographic populations where the, the inequities are extreme. But I think speaking from inequities are extreme. But I think speaking from our particular city's perspective, if we want to be very comprehensive about how we reach out into the various ways that this issue affects, you know, all sorts of people, I think that's part of the work that we can be doing. And I think I speak for everyone when I say that you do have a partner in Cupertino to be able to address this in a very fully broad-scale effort. So thanks very much for making it out. That'll be my comments for the evening. I'll go to Vice Mayor Chow next to, as your hand raised.
Hi, thirty seconds. Echoed Han's comment about education. I think people tend to have stereotype about people they don't know, and I think the education probably should focus on homeless people are, they are like any of us. They are, I watched YouTube video, a channel feature, a lot of amazing, intelligent people who are homeless, who just fell on bedtimes because their parents are sick. They sacrifice all their savings for their parents. And we just need to know they are just like any of us. And they are, even when they are homeless, they are particular. They're, some keep their camp very clean, some are messy. Their camp is cleaner than me. So I think we need more understanding on the community.
So keeping time, I kept about five minutes. I will go ahead and cede my extra time over. If councilmembers want to finish up their thought, Vice Mayor Chow? Okay, excellent. Would anyone else like to make comments? Kitty has about four minutes, Hung, two fifty, John, one forty-five. I think it's been a great discussion. You know, again, thank you. I know that it's six forty-two right now, so if we were to wrap this up and take a roll call vote, we would be able to make it to our regularly scheduled meeting on time. I see Councilmember Willie has his hand up. John?
Yeah, I just can't thank Catherine and Ray enough. I mean, anything, you know, that I could say, you guys have just done a wonderful job bringing this out. We need to expand the awareness of this issue, and then I think we'd have a lot more participation. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And I'm sure we all echo those sentiments, and thank you for making it out this evening, Catherine and Ray, as well as Carrie. Thank you for the work that you've done on this. Seeing no other hands raised, I will ask the city clerk to conduct a roll call vote for the motion on the table.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, very good. So we're one minute till six forty-five, so I guess you can take a brief breather, and we'll commence in a moment. So the special meeting is adjourned.
Can you tell us how many minutes we have? Do we have the five minutes, or?
Um, I'll take an early break on the regular meeting, if you like, but.
I want to know if I have time to.
That's fine, we can start a couple minutes late. All right. So we'll come back at six forty-seven on your phones. Thank you. So we will begin the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. This is December fifteenth. If we could please begin with a, with the roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Willie? Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. And I think this would be a good time to share with the public the calling number, which is on the current agenda, but we wanted to provide that because a prior version did not have it. So Madam City Clerk, would you like to provide that?
Sure.
I can just put it up if you like.
I have it right here. Can you see that?
Yes.
Wait.
Yeah, we see your Word file. It's maybe.
Can you see the teleconference public participation information updates?
Yes, so for members of the public, if you'd like to dial in and speak during commentary, the number is six six nine nine hundred six eight three three with a webinar ID nine four nine five two three four eight one oh four, and you'll have to dial asterisk nine, that is star nine, to raise your hand to speak. All right.
Additionally, Mayor, this information is also posted with tonight's meeting agenda on the city website.
Okay, very good. So I'll go over our procedure briefly again, since we're at the beginning of the, of the regular meeting. I've implemented some requests and notifications to the public with regard to some elaborations on our rules of procedure, which are Rosenberg's rules, which were adopted as our formal rules of procedure a little bit earlier this year, in the earlier part of the year. And so I'll go ahead and share a document that the city clerk will be circulating to our council if she hasn't already, and will be provided as part of the meeting materials here. Okay, so I am oddly having a little bit of an issue finding this bow. Here we go. All right, good. And this won't be it yet, but let's see if I can find the right. Here we go. Okay, so basic procedural requirements, and this is done in an effort to keep our meetings effective and efficient. Please speak through the chair. Second, don't interrupt when another person's speaking, but if we speak through the chair, then ultimately we won't have the issue with item number two. The order of procedure on our agenda items is listed on our agenda, but we haven't been fully diligent in following that order in the past. And so I want to reiterate and also elaborate on some of these items. For an item, you'll always have a staff report, and I use the term staff report to include any and all reports on the item from city staff, as well as any presentations coordinated by staff as part of the agenda item. That's, for example, consultants, the applicant in certain items, the appellant, et cetera, et cetera. Please allow staff to provide and direct the staff report uninterrupted. Save all of your questions until after the staff report is over. With regard to council questions, that will come next. The total time to be allocated to each council member will be three minutes. There will be a timer for each council member, and this will include the time that it takes to answer questions. A council member can use some of the time now, some of the time later. And I'll be keeping the time initially until we have the ability to put up five timers on our screen, so that everyone knows how much is left. So following that, there will be public comment. We are a community that I think really appreciates discourse, and so with regard to those public three minutes, I will be, you know, permitting some back and forth if the public has questions of the presentation of staff. Please feel free, know that the answers are also folded into your three minutes as well. And then when we go back to council, I will ask for a motion, and that's where we diverged a little bit from our stated procedure. But in order to effectuate discussion from council, we will be needing a motion. Keep in mind, that motion can always be amended or voted down, and another motion brought forth. But in order to begin our deliberations, we'll have a motion on the table. If nobody brings a motion, then the motion will be the default staff recommendation, which is with each item. And then finally, with council deliberations, those will be five minutes each. We'll set a timer for each council member, and similar to the questions from council, we can break up the time. You can use a minute now, you know, four minutes later in a different round. I'll call on people. And then finally, and I'm going to try to not to, you know, go too far from this, if ever, I can grant extension or adjustments of time limits. And I appreciate everyone's, you know, willingness to work with us to make sure that we have some public notice as to the expectations of time, as well as, you know, making sure that we can conduct our meetings in a really effective manner that is, you know, adherent to a commonly understood procedure. So thank you very much for that. And with that, I'll go ahead and move on to the next item. I don't believe we have any ceremonial matters and presentations tonight. Madam City Clerk, are there any postponements that are listed on our agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have a number of postponements this evening. The first item of which is consider continuing item number eleven regarding the dark sky and bird safe design, continuing to January nineteenth. This would require a motion, however, because the council did vote on December first to continue this to a date certain, which is this, tonight's meeting agenda.
Right, okay, so let's address that first. So I will bring that motion to continue the item number eleven to January nineteenth, to the date certain of January nineteenth. And may I have a second from council? I see Councilmember Willie has his hand raised. Would you like to second the motion for purposes of discussion?
I actually, of course, I'm happy to second, but can you give us just a brief reasoning behind the postponement of this item?
Certainly. Would staff like to speak to that? Or Deb, would you like to speak to the reason for the request on our agenda to postpone to our next regularly scheduled council meeting, reminding everyone that January fifth has been canceled?
Yeah, so the next date certain is January nineteenth. Just for council consideration, we feel that although this item was noticed, there just seems to be, have been perhaps a breakdown in communication, and we thought a little more time to January nineteenth would provide us with more input for a more robust resulting resolution of municipal code.
So I'll go ahead and second your motion.
Okay, I appreciate that. Are there any questions from, there's a question from Vice Mayor Chow?
I would rather to not to have a discussion today because I would like to hear from the two new council members. I think that they deserve to have their inputs heard before this comes back in January.
Okay, very good. Councilmember, so I'll just remind everyone that, and I apologize for this, I should have asked for the motion after we heard from the public, and after we had an opportunity to have questions asked. We do have members of the public. So are there any questions at this point from council? Councilmember Wei, you have your hand now not raised. So I will, Councilmember Moore?
Just a kind of a clarifying question about this process. So we are, in essence, just moving this item to January nineteenth, and any issues or questions that we might have, we'll bring up at that time. So what is going on with staff with regards to this ordinance in the meantime? What's happening? Is it just staff working on it? Is there some community engagement that where we could possibly be seeing an altered ordinance in the future? So, you know, just a little bit, what can we expect? Am I going to be looking at something different, you know, a few days before January nineteenth?
Would staff like to field that question? I know that we have our Director of Community Development, Benjamin Foo, on as well.
We try it, Ben, and then you can, sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor. So yes, we're working with several community members, large community members, with some input that they are, and the questions they're asking, and maybe making any edits from the last round of comments. As prior, we will be posting the agenda for January nineteenth, seven days ahead. And certainly since you have the current material on the item, you can post questions or suggestions to city staff before the January nineteenth timeframe.
Okay. Okay, any further questions or elaboration from other staff? No? Any further questions from Councilmember Moore? You'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I just want to point out, or just as a reminder, that we did have community-wide postcards given to all the addresses in the, in the community. And there were two community outreach meetings, and there were several hours of discussion at the Planning Commission. It came to the Planning Commission the first time.
We'll have the opportunity for discussion after we hear from the members of the public. So I'll put you there at fifty. If you think of other questions, please feel free to pose them. So Councilmember Wei, you have your hand up. Do you have any questions at this point?
No, actually, I think I'll wait until after the public comment.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, I'll go over to members of the public. We have Connie Cunningham, followed by Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by Dashil Leeds. Connie, welcome.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, thank you for the time to speak. My name is Connie Cunningham. I've lived in Cupertino thirty-three years, and I am a longtime member of Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Congratulations first to Hung Wei and Kitty Moore on their recent elections and selection of Mayor Darcy Paul and Vice Mayor Chow. Best wishes for the coming years, leading our beautiful city. I urge you not to postpone discussion and approval of agenda item eleven. After reading the written communications from the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society, Sierra Club, and the Chamber of Commerce, I do understand and agree with the reasons for severing Dark Sky's amendment to January nineteenth. However, please do not postpone the vote on bird safe design. Our city has been a leader on behalf of the environment in many ways. For example, Cupertino was recently awarded the Platinum Beacon Vanguard Award for Leadership on Climate Change. Both of these regulations tonight are natural fit. I commend city staff, Ellen Yao, Eric Serrano, and Pew Gosh, on their excellent report, and for efforts on behalf of all of us and the environment. Awareness is key to help people realize that they can help care for some of the smallest living creatures among us. I have spoken on behalf of wildlife, especially birds and biodiversity, a number of times. There has been significant support from the community. I speak for birds because they cannot speak for themselves. And why I care is that millions of birds collide with windows every year. Overall numbers of birds in the U.S. are declining radically, and residential homes are a key source of bird strikes because of the sheer number of homes. During early COVID pandemic, I posted a different world wild bird species each day to next door, and many, many people responded with stories of their own about the wild birds in their yards. This sharing of nature benefited all of us. And one key point I want to bring up is about glass treatments that must be visible for all birds. Note that glass treatments can reduce use of heating and air conditioning, too, so can save money and energy. I urge you to support Cupertino and take the recommended action. Amend the Bird Safe Design municipal code as specified in the report. Your support will go a long way to educating all residents of the role that we all play in the long-term health of our environment and saving birds who bring us the thrill of flight, life, and color in small packages. I want to say that Christian is showing seven of the birds that I see in my neighborhood, and I actually have up to forty pictures of birds in my neighborhood. And just this morning, when I went on my walk around my neighborhood, we saw fifteen different species, including many of the ones that you're seeing on the screen here. And my last comment would be on this last little bird here. This is the yellow-rumped warbler. He flies here in this time of year, fall and winter, and then he goes away someplace else. He has hundreds of miles, and he's only like four or five inches long.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll go on to Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by Dashil Leeds, followed by Venkit Ranganathan. Welcome, Shawnee.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, city council members, Shawnee Kleinhouse, the environmental advocate for Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. We brought the Bird Safe Design and Dark Sky to your attention together with the Sierra Club almost two years ago. It's been a long time, and it's kind of disappointing that at this point we are looking at, after so many community meetings and outreach. after so many community meetings and outreach and Planning Commission hearings and one city council hearing, we're looking to defer. I understand that there is a lot of concerns about the Dark Sky ordinance, and we have talked to the Chamber of Commerce and agreed that it makes sense to give the business community more time to consider and see how that may affect them. I think there are enough exemptions there, so it wouldn't, but it's fair to to do that, and I support that. But for our Audubon group with the huge decline in migratory birds and the fact that there is nothing in the documentation, we've seen letters and the people posted and sent to you and other efforts, there was nothing that asked to defer the Bird Safe Design. And so if you could bifurcate this order, these two ordinances and and move ahead with the Bird Safe Design tonight and adopt that and defer the Dark Sky for later, I think that makes sense. And it's it's to us, it's a better way to go than to defer both. Businesses are suffering, we understand because of the COVID, and so it really does make sense to give them more time to consider how the Dark Sky ordinance could affect them and make sure that they're not affect that there is no harm harm to them. But the Bird Safe Design, it's really time to move it ahead, and we really ask you to bifurcate those two and to move ahead with Bird Safe Design. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawnee. Our next speaker is Dashil Leeds, followed by Venkitt Ranganathan, followed by Rose Grimes. Welcome, Dashil.
Hello, my name is Dashil Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. And we're asking you, please do not postpone the vote on Bird Safe Design tonight. We join with the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society and the Chamber of Commerce in recommending that you vote to approve the Bird Safe Design ordinance tonight. And we also would support deferring only the Dark Sky ordinance to give more time for discussion on that. We're pleased to see that staff has bifurcated the Bird Safe Design ordinance from the Dark Sky ordinance already and has included a Bird Safe-only ordinance in today's agenda, and we believe that this as written is ready today for your approval. In reviewing the comments submitted to council, we are pleased to see that Bird Safe Design has received a lot of community support, and for good reason. People love birds. They're an integral part of our ecosystem. And watching and listening to them is a great source of beauty and tranquility. And personally, while sheltering in place, birds have been a real source of joy for me, and I think they've had a really positive impact on my mental health during this pandemic. And, you know, this is a larger issue. Over the past half century, North America has lost more than a quarter of its entire bird population, or around 3 billion birds. And bird strikes at buildings are one of the most serious causes of these fatalities. Our efforts to protect birds here will not only benefit our local community, but will also ripple outwards as we safeguard the migratory bird populations that pass through Cupertino. So we think you have a great Bird Safe Design ordinance before you tonight, and we really hope that you take the opportunity to approve it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dashil. Our next speaker is Venkitt Ranganathan, followed by Rose Grimes, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Venkitt.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Venkitt Ranganathan, resident of Cupertino for 10 years and a Bay Area resident for more than 25 years. At the outset, my congratulations to the newly elected council members and on the election of Mayor Darcy Paul and Vice Mayor Lian Chow. I raise the issue of the 5G and some additional, some sites with additional 4G cells towers, which emits the 4G towers emits hundred times more radiation and five times more power than 5G cells alone, and these have been coming up all through the city.
Venkitt, I'm going to pause you there. This is actually a postponement with regard to dark skies and bird safe. You'll have an opportunity to speak on oral communications.
Sure, sorry about that.
Probably after this item. So we'll go on to Rose Grimes, followed by Lisa Warren and and Robert Hurt. Welcome, Rose.
Thank you very much. Also add my welcome to the new city council members and congratulations to the continuing city council. In terms of the issue on the on the deck for postponement, I have participated in the meetings, the community meetings that were held by the city staff and the development of these proposals, as well as all the Planning Commission meetings and the previous city council meetings. So I feel that the the city staff, as well as the council and commissioners, have done a really good job on addressing the concerns in both of these matters. But I can understand that questions from the community, particularly the business community, may lead you to feel that you'd like to allow for further consideration before taking up the dark skies, but I would endorse the the perspectives of the previous speakers and encourage the passage of the Bird Safe Design. I really think that that's ready. I think that both of these regulations put Cupertino, very appropriately, at the forefront of environmental consciousness in a way that's beneficial to the community, as well as the community's businesses and the environment that we that we inhabit. So I'm in support of both amendments, but I can also support your idea of the proposal to to sever them. I'd rather see the Bird Safe Design reviewed today than postponed to January because, again, I just think that it's ready to go. And I also have my husband here to share my three minutes, who is an amateur astronomer.
I just wanted to second what Rose, what Rose, this is Peter Friedland, wanted to suggest, to second what Rose said. I think, I actually think both are ready to go, and I think the overall community would be heavily supportive of them. As I mentioned last time, there's a rapidly growing amateur astronomy community as long as we're all stuck at home during the pandemic. And anything that provides for darky skies at night and reduces light pollution, I think will be much appreciated by that community. I think both are ready to go, but if if the council is ready to pass the bird safety one today but thinks they need a little bit more time on dark skies, that's okay also. I would vote for both today, but I'd rather see at least one go today if at all possible.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Rose and Peter. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren, followed by Robert Hurt, followed by a caller ending 9205 on the phone number, and that's our last speaker. Welcome, Lisa.
Okay. Hi, thank you. So I echo what Rose and her husband said, and what Shawnee and Dashil said as well. However, more so with Rose because I think they're both ready. This has been going on a long time with a lot of input. I also attended the committee meetings and have been in communication and have seen the discussions in other leadership meetings. I I have to say, and I think others are thinking this and just haven't said it, that this has become, the the dark sky has become a political volleyball all of a sudden, and it just seems wrong. Staff, Eric and Ellen had put in a lot of work, and I think they've they're ready, both of them. But definitely the bird safety, if if you have to appease the business community, if that's what it means, you know, where were they when we had the workshops? I don't see anybody representing businesses in the workshop I was in. And I did get wind of an email that went out from Chamber of Commerce. It wasn't terribly resident or can or city-friendly, in my opinion. And it bothered me. So there you go. I still my deans, but only part of them. And I I really think you need to move forward with both of them. But if you can't or won't, then the birds need to fly now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Robert Hurt, followed by a caller with a phone number ending 9205, and now Rajul Pandit is our last speaker. Welcome, Robert.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm Robert Hurt here. I'm 26-year general resident and wanted to say I totally support both features, but I agree that if we can't get both through tonight, we should at least get the Bird Safe Building Sign feature enacted. I'm kind of an older guy, and I'm sitting home. My joy is watching birds at the feeder coming in. I don't get outside as much. Really, I haven't been outside in about eight months. And I'm really, really pleased to see the birds that do come to the feeder, and they are the birds that migrate in for the winter, and Bird Safe Design is really critical for them. Like I said, I'm in favor of both statutes. I think they're both ready to go tonight. But if they can't go, I think Bird Safe Building Sign should be at least enacted tonight. And that's all. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Robert. Our next speaker is a phone number ending 9205, followed by Rajul Pandit, followed by Jill Halloran. Welcome, caller with phone number ending 9205. I believe you'll need to unmute your phone. And you are unmuted. Yes.
Hi, this is Joe. This is Joe Spalding from Oakland, California, and I wanted to thank the Vice Mayor for watching that wonderful documentary and talking about your neighboring city up north here in the East Bank. I wanted to say that this issue is for the birds. We're in the middle of a housing crisis, and we have elected officials that are spending more time learning about its worst impact by watching YouTube and speaking about Bird Safe Design than talking with actual homeless people and displaced people. This should be postponed indefinitely. It's also not true that birds can't speak for themselves. My buddy's kid got a parrot last Christmas. It could speak. When my friend's wife got it, she got it for a discount from the pet store because it used to sit behind the bar at a home of ill repute, one with loose morals. And it would describe people it met, ask them if they wanted a drink. So when my friend's wife met it, it, you know, said, "Hi, Burnett, do you want a bourbon?" And she thought she could train this out of him, but, you know, when it met my friend's kid, it said, "Hey, 15-year-old, do you want a do you want a shot of whiskey?" And, you know, the thing that was the last straw for for her and that that parrot was when my friend, her husband, came home and it said, "Oh, hey, Pete, do you want another beer?" Oh, anyway, I hope this gets postponed indefinitely. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rajul Pandit, followed by Jill Halloran, followed by a phone number ending 2910. Welcome, Rajul.
Yes, hi, thank you for taking me. I think I'm, am I supposed to talk? Can I talk about another topic, or is this only related to the birds as you're?
This is only related to postponing potentially the Bird Safe and Dark Sky ordinance discussion. Oral communications is after this.
Okay, then I will wait for that. Sorry about that.
Okay, very good. Our next speaker is Jill Halloran, followed by a phone number ending 2910, followed by Linda Ruthroff. Welcome, Jill. And Jill, you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Cupertino, and I love birds. I would like to request that you do not postpone the vote on the Bird Safe Design. It's not only that birds are things, you know, creatures that people tend to love. They really truly are an important part of our ecosystem. If you don't like flies, if you don't like mosquitoes, if you don't like insect pests, then you ought to love birds. I have, like so many other people, I have a home office now, and I watch them forage on our lawn, our backyard outside all the time, and eat lots and lots insects. And that's just one of the many reasons, and many other people have covered the other reasons, but I really strongly urge you not to postpone that vote. And the dark sky, I would like to see that adopted, but I understand that that might be postponed, and that's okay with me. I just want to I just want to throw in my two cents there that I I can remember the days when the the skies were much darker around here because of Lick Observatory, apparently, and I don't understand what happened with that. I don't know how the people at the astronomers feel now at Lick Observatory, but now the skies are way too bright for people, for animals, for anyone. And I have a particular problem, even personally, with LED signs of any kind. I find I must be one of those people that they affect in a weird way. It really, it really throws me off. I can't stand to be looking at them at all. And if it affects me that way, I can't imagine how it must affect animals. Anyway, I just want to, I I understand that you might postpone that, the dark skies vote until January, but I would like to really urge you to vote for the Bird Safe Design now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. Our next speaker is a phone number ending 2910, followed by Linda Ruthroff. Welcome. So if you are dialing in and your phone number ends in 2910, you'll need to unmute yourself. I believe you can do that by hitting star nine on your phone. Okay, unfortunately, that's not. Oh, see, it's unmuted now. And unfortunately, that caller is now gone. So we'll go to Linda Ruthroff. Welcome, Linda.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Linda Ruthroff. I'm the Conservation Chair for the Santa Clara Valley Chapter of the California Native Plant Society. I'm here tonight to support our fellow environmental organization, well, organizations, both Audubon and Sierra Club, in asking you to pass the Bird Safe Design ordinance tonight. Native plants and birds have a symbiotic relationship. Birds depend on plants for food. Plants depend on birds to scatter their seed. Many people get interested in planting native plants because they're interested in bringing wildlife to their backyard. Having people create habitat in their backyard is what's going to help maintain biodiversity in the area because we have so much land that is private property. And if we can get people's creating habitat in their backyards, we're going to encourage and help support biodiversity. But this all doesn't work if the birds are dying, and the birds are dying because they run into buildings, they run into glass. They are attracted to light at night. And so we really feel like it's important that that the city become a leader in protecting wildlife and by passing this ordinance for Bird Safe Design. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And Linda is our last speaker on this item, and I'll remind everyone that the item is to consider a potential postponement of item number 11. So having spoken out of turn with regard to the bringing of the motion initially, I will withdraw that since I brought forward that motion. Would anyone like to bring forward a motion from council at this point, prior to our discussion on this potential postponement?
I'd like to bring forward the motion to separate the dark sky and the bird safe design and keep the bird safe design on our agenda for tonight, but postpone the dark sky.
Would anyone like to second Councilmember Willie's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so Councilmember Willie moves, and Councilmember Wei seconds to bifurcate this item and to postpone dark sky and to hear the bird safe design component of item number 11 tonight. Does anyone care to discuss this? Please raise your hand. Vice Mayor Chow. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Yeah. So I would still like to have some updates from the staff regarding even the dark sky ordinance because it was brought up that maybe the streetlights that's in Cupertino, that's currently not covered under the ordinance. But that's really the what's causing a lot of light in for our city at night. I'd like to get some updates from the staff what what has happened in the last two weeks and what they are planning to do. So I think we should have a checking right now. Even though we do support that, we should postpone that to that item to January 19th.
As part of Councilmember Chow's time, would staff like to respond to that? Is that logistically possible to have an update on what has happened with dark skies while we postpone it?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, we can certainly do that.
And Madam City Attorney, would be the appropriate point to do that, if at all, from a legal perspective? Would we do that here or would we do that when we go to item number 11?
Well, I will note that item number 11 does have two options of ordinances for you to consider. One is a, a bird safe only ordinance and the other is, is an integrated bird safe and dark sky ordinance. And I'll note that the bird safe only ordinance does include some lighting issues as well as the glazing issues is those two, two regulations are both affect birds. And so what I would recommend is that you would vote to not post, well, to, you could take the, the motion that you've considered as, as moving forward with item number 11 and then discuss the bird safe only option at item 11. But you could get an update on the dark skies as well as that's already included in that item.
So you feel like we can direct an update at that time without, without changing the current motion on the table? Is that right?
Yes, because I think then the discussion would be about the bird safe only design and otherwise you could just move not to postpone the item and, and consider everything.
Okay, noted. Are there any other points of discussion from Vice Mayor Chow at this point? Okay, seeing none, you still have approximately two minutes and 20 seconds left, if you'd like to use it later. We have Councilmember Moore with her hand up. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'm curious what the difference is between the members, I believe, of the business community, the commercial property owners. What is the difference between they're wanting to have more time to look at the dark skies ordinance and, and the bird safe ordinance? Because it seems to me if they didn't feel that they had adequate review time, perhaps because of some of the more common ways of having it brought to them, perhaps through a chamber meeting, maybe through, because of COVID, it didn't happen that way. So I'd like to understand why there's a difference that in bird safe being okay, when did they have the time to review that versus the dark skies? And then personally, having reviewed them both together, I, you know, became accustomed to seeing that all as one ordinance. So the breaking apart, I find personally more difficult. So we could have a competing motion to postpone the entire thing. But I would like to understand what's the logic of, how did they, how did this community manage to look at bird safe and feel comfortable with that versus dark skies? Or is that not really the case? And that they really do need time to look at the bird safe design portion as well?
Would staff like to speak to that?
I can take a stab. I can't really speak on the rationale for what is chamber or other community groups' ability to review these items prior and what their intentions are for wanting to see more outreach. But, but we are making another round of efforts to outreach to them to discuss these items.
Okay, any further questions from Councilmember Moore at this time? Okay, seeing none, you have about three minutes left. Does anyone else have comments that they'd like to make? I'll remind you that we do have a motion on the table. And if there aren't any further comments, I will call the question. So I'll remind everyone that the motion on the table is to consider bird safe design later on item 11 and to postpone dark skies with a request. This is not part of the motion, but I'll make the request as a follow up to Vice Mayor Chow's request to have a, an update on the dark skies ordinance and potential changes we've had since the last meeting. Okay, so seeing no other hands up from council, I will ask our city clerk to please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there is a hand up now.
Sorry.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Chow, do you have another comment?
I have a question. It seems like we could just not postpone and then just do the item 11 and then decide to continue one item and, and approve one resolution at that time, right? This is very confusing. Now you are postponing one health plus you want to update. I think this is more confusing than just not postpone and do item 11.
Okay, so now you have two minutes. I'll go ahead and respond to that.
Could I do a motion that?
Yes, you're right, yes.
A motion to not postpone. So is that a motion to not?
Absolutely, absolutely. That is a legitimate motion.
I'd like to propose a replacement motion to not postpone the item and we just conduct our discussions at item 11 and continue or approve either of those items at that time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Chow has put forward a substitute motion. Is there a second for this substitute motion? Okay, I don't see a second for the substitute motion. I see Councilmember Moore has her hand up. Chair recognizes Councilmember Moore. You'll need to unmute yourself, however.
Yeah, okay, so I'm not, not to second, but going back to my original comments, I still have a little bit more time. I am concerned that the commercial owners that want to weigh in have not had a chance to look at the bird safe design. And I, I want to know what they have to say about that. And I, and I don't really feel like I'm getting a good answer where I feel assured that both elements were looked at. I think there was the, they looked at the dark skies and got concerned there. But I, until I've really heard from both sides, I, I feel as though we're getting something unbalanced.
Okay. Are there any further comments from council? And I'll remind, yes, Councilmember Willie.
I might just offer one comment is on the bird safe design, I was pretty much happy with when, I think it was the Cupertino Inn came for review of their building and they are actually using the bird safe design on all their windows. And so from that aspect, I think that really kind of paved the way for me when a establishment like a hotel where the upper floors are definitely trying to intrigue guests with the views and stuff, and yet they had the windows with the small circles all around the windows for the bird safe design. So, so I think the bird safe design from a business standpoint, I think, is, is not as important as the light that would entice people to come to this part of town.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And we have, Councilmember Way, with your hand raised, I don't believe you've spoken yet, so you do start out at five. Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo Councilmember Willie's comment and I believe the business community is more concerned about the dark sky because of business running over late and the bird safety design, I think they are pretty good with it. That's what I heard from the chamber. So that's why I echo what John has said.
Okay, very good. I will go ahead and make what I think will be my closing comment. I'll go ahead and support the motion on the table. That's it. Does anyone else have? So I do see Councilmember Way, your hand is still up. However, Vice Mayor Chow has her hand up as well. Vice Mayor Chow.
So just one comment. I did spoke, I did speak to Rod Dearden Jr. and from Apple. And they are concerned actually about both ordinances. They are hoping to get more comments in, in January. So it's not all businesses are okay with the bird safe, even though I do hope we can move something forward. And that's why I hope to have a discussion today. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let us go ahead and consider the motion on the table. I think we've had a good set of rounds of discussion on this. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct a roll call vote on the motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Excuse me, Mayor Paul, could you, because we've had two motions, could you remind us of what the first one is?
No, we don't have two motions. There was no second or for the second motion. So the only motion on the table right now is to postpone dark, the dark sky ordinance consideration and to consider bird safe design under item number 11 this evening with a, with a brief update from staff with regard to what has modified with regard to dark skies since our last council meeting.
Okay, correct. Okay, no.
Councilmember Way?
Hi.
Councilmember Willie?
Oops, hi.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, I think it's okay. Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with more voting no.
Okay, so our other three postponements, Madam City Clerk, if I understand them correctly, are simply notices with item two being the community gardens item continued to the 19th of January, item three being the transportation impact fee being continued to January 19th as well. And item number four is a postponement of our mobile vending regulations, which has also been continued to January 19th. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, very good. Our next item is oral communications. At this point, any member of the public that would like to speak on any item that is not on our agenda may do so for three minutes. And so we will go ahead and take those comments at this time. Our first three speakers are Jennifer Griffin, Rhoda Frye, and a phone number ending nine nine two four. Welcome, Jennifer.
Mayor, could I just say, weren't we supposed to approve the postponements?
Yeah.
I apologize for that. Are we, okay. Let me backtrack then, you know, new mayor for a second time. Is, that is correct, I believe.
So I'll move to accept. I'll move to accept item two, three and four.
Is that, is that?
Actually, Mayor, no, you were correct, you were correct initially. These items have been postponed by staff. The only reason that they're on, included on the postponements agenda this evening is they've been noticed publicly. So we're just, they do not require a motion or acceptance by council. No action is required for those three items.
Okay, right. So, so for, for consent calendar, that would be the appropriate procedure of the postponements. Okay, very good. So thank you, Councilmember Willie, for keeping, keeping us honest here. We will go on to oral communications. I apologize for that hiccup. Again, we're starting with Jennifer Griffin, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by a caller ending nine nine two four. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin and I just wanted to bring up an item that I'm very, very concerned about. As you all are aware, we have had a number of high density housing bills that have come out of Sacramento. I believe that this started three years ago with Jerry Brown and Scott Weiner and a number of other people, legislators, introducing lots and lots of high density housing bills that the public were really confused about. I mean, I, I was confused and floored at the time they came rolling out because I didn't understand where they were coming from or who they were supposed to be intended for. Well, after three years of study, it has become apparent that there is issues with big money backing for these bills. I am very, very concerned and I want to bring this to the public's attention that the California Legislative Session for 2021 has only been in session for five days. A lot of the senators have brought back housing bills that were not passed last year. Some of these bills have been brought back word for word. This is SB nine by Tony Atkins, which is word for word from SB 1120. This is the intent to build on one lot, six to eight units. This one has been brought back word for word already within four days of the new legislative session. SB 10 used to be SB 902. This is Scott Weiner's three years. This is the same thing that was SB 50. This is just going on and on. This allows 10 units market rate apartments almost anywhere in any city. SB seven used to be SB 995 and that's Tony Atkins. This ignores CEQA. And Nancy Skinner has brought SB eight, which is almost identical to another housing bill. This is, as far as I'm concerned, this is reprehensible. Someone is trying to pull the wool over the public's eyes and people laugh about it like the public shouldn't know or care what is going on. These are dangerous bills and the fact that Scott Weiner has come back three years in a row with the same bill, who is giving him this money? We know, but it's not fair. And I'm really tired of the public being kept in the dark about the big money machines. This is money coming in from out of the state and in the state. I think that it's very important we keep an eye on this because these bills are being pumped out by big money. Anyway, thank you so much. Keep your eye not on the prize. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Rhoda Frye, followed by a caller ending nine nine two four, followed by someone called calling user one. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I have several updates for you about the Lehigh Cement Plant and the two cores in Cupertino. First, you've likely seen a glowing press release pertaining to reducing air pollution limits at Lehigh Cement Plant. Please notice that the press release fails to mention actual pollution reduction. In fact, Lehigh's consent decree to resolve a 2010 notice of violation pertaining to pollution from the 1990s does little to reduce actual sulfur and nitrogen pollution. According to commentary by the National Parks Conservation Association, this EPA consent decree was by far less restrictive to Lehigh's cement plants than consent decrees with other cement companies. While the allowable rates of sulfur and nitrogen pollution have been reduced, the actual rates have not. For example, the Cupertino Cement Plant accounts for nearly 13% of California's industrial sulfur pollution and is our state's number two sulfur polluter, just behind a refinery that is due to close in 2023. Backmed will be allowing the Cupertino Cement Plant to pollute over five times more sulfur than other cement plants per ton of product nationwide. This consent decree brokered by Backmed is not a victory for Bay Area residents. Backmed must not subsidize this multinational company at the expense of Cupertino residents' health. Backmed must do better to protect human health. This week, Backmed will be having two meetings that affect pollution from Lehigh, a board meeting tomorrow and a stationary source committee meeting on Thursday. One meeting deals with particulate matter, which is a huge public issue, public health issue. Keep in mind that Lehigh and Owens Corning are in the top 12 particulate matter polluters in California. Also Thursday, the county will be having two meetings. One discusses the results of an internal audit that reveals that the county has never adequately regulated the Stevens Creek Court. Additionally, the Planning Commission will be reviewing the annual Lehigh inspection report. Once again, there's no really resolution to the manmade landslide above Permanent Day Creek that threatens homes and structures downstream. It is incredibly frustrating that we have been given the impression that these major polluters are being regulated when in fact they are not. Thank you very much and over and out. when in fact they are not. Thank you very much, and over and out.
Thank you, Rhoda. Our next speaker is calling from a phone number ending 9924, followed by someone identified as Call and User 1, followed by Munni Matapatla. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Nick Quata, and I am the Program Manager 2 of the Santa Clara County Office of the Census, a department within Division of Equity and Social Justice. Apologies, I would have loved to do this in person, but, you know, I, I wanted to reach out at some point and due to COVID-19, we're gonna have to do it this way. But, you know, the county really wishes to formally acknowledge and the partnership we had with the City of Cupertino for its hard work in helping all communities get counted in 2020 census. You know, together we were able to increase the city's self-response rate in 2010 of 79.7% to an astonishing 83.2%, one of only six cities to surpass 80%, which is a humongous milestone. And this is all despite numerous challenges like wildfires, anti-immigrant rhetoric, including the failed threat of an additional citizenship question, and an unprecedented health crisis. Thanks to your leadership and the city staff, you all have assured a decade's worth of much-needed federal funding during an impending and continuing crisis in representation for our local communities. That said, the fight continues. Recently, county council draft and amicus in the Supreme Court arguing the inclusion of all people in the count for the purposes of redistricting. We know that there will be, continue to be other causes we will have to fight for and that partnership, the partnership we built around the 2020 census will be the example we will use to find success. Thank you again.
Thank you, Nicholas. Our next speaker is identified as Call and User 1, followed by Munni Matapatla, followed by Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Call and User 1. So if you have a device.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Brent Bardslay, 10408 Menheart. I'm a 36-year-old resident of Cupertino. Mayor Paul, council staff, and congratulations to the two new council members. I'm calling because I would like the city council to consider issuing a commendation to the Cupertino library staff. In my opinion, they've gone above and beyond the call of duty to keep the books and other items flowing to the patrons. And this is all in despite of the COVID problem and the smoke from the fires this summer. They've done everything possible to accommodate all those challenges. So if possible, I'd like the city council to consider issuing an official commendation for the year 2020, commanding the Cupertino City Library staff for all their help. And even if the city council chooses not to issue this commendation, I wish personally to appreciate all of the library staff for their help. Okay, that's all.
Thank you so much, Brent. Our next speaker is Munni Matapatla, followed by Venkatesh Ranganathan, followed by Peter Chu. Welcome, Munni.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Munni Matipatla. I'm a Cupertino resident. I'm also a bike and pet commissioner, but I'm here talking as a resident representing myself. First, congratulations to Darcy Paul for becoming a mayor and Dr. Liang Chow for becoming Vice Mayor. We are lucky and blessed to have both of you in these roles. I want to discuss, you know, the cell tower issue. Ever since I got the micro cell tower insulation notice from Verizon on the pole right next to my home, I started paying attention to such cell towers in neighboring towns. As you know, I bike around a lot. Unfortunately, I could not see these cell towers in any of the neighboring neighborhood towns, but I see plenty of them in Cupertino. As a resident, I feel betrayed by the city staff for selling out our city to business interests on a controversial issue such as cell tower installations where residents have concerns. I understand the desire to adopt technology. We don't need to be the first ones to take on such, such a technology that residents have a lot of concerns. Not that, you know, we don't have internet access in the city. People have choice of Comcast, AT&amp;T, wide connections. We could adopt 5G technology when it's proven not to cause any health issues. The fact that, you know, the city staff failed to advise the city council on establishing guidelines and rules for these, I feel city staff is disconnected from the community. We need them to understand they are here to serve the community. I would highly encourage you to table this item and reverse the course. I would hate to see a massive residents uprising against our city office for such failure. With hundreds of light poles in approval queue for cell towers, with each pole having 50-plus residents around them, collecting thousands of signatures is not that difficult at all. Hopefully, you know, we don't have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Munni. Our next speaker is Venkatesh Ranganathan, followed by Peter Chu, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Venkatesh.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Venkatesh Ranganathan, a resident of Cupertino for 10 years and behavior as a resident for more than 24 years. My congratulations again to the newly elected council members and on the election of Mayor Darcy Paul and Vice Mayor Liang Chow to their new positions. Yes, as Munni spoke before me, I have raised this 5G issue, 5G cell tower issue from my restaurant over, over the past few council meetings as well as in other commissions. They also sent emails and information about documents containing the harmful radiation effects. And some of these are not just 5G towers but with 4G and 4G cell sites also, which have 100 times more radiation and five times more power. So these are really harmful in the neighborhood, particularly very close. The setbacks limits are very, 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 very less. One, for example, the one near my house is hardly 25 feet, not even 25 feet from my window, bedroom window. So I would like the city, and I will implore on the city council to take up this matter and have it on the agenda to discuss this in the next council meeting or in a future council meeting and post activities on the, until we have some discussion with the, with the residents fully engaged and a useful, a, a correct decision taken on this. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Venkatesh. Our next speaker is Peter Chu, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Rose Grimes. Welcome, Peter.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Peter Chu, and I spoke last month at the Council meeting regarding 5G cell towers. And just, you know, since then, the number of 5G cell towers, which at the time was under 50 cell sites, now it's over 100, more than double. And this is only Verizon, just for everybody's record, right? And based on my conversation and further research, I'd like to make a plea to the city council to act with urgency, to respond with something very specific, perhaps three relatively straightforward changes to the draft guidelines we have in place. This is a growing concern because as pointed out by City Manager Ms. Fang in the last meeting, there will be hundreds of lampposts with 5G and 4G installations combos going forward. And because carriers such as Verizon have carefully crafted this notification strategy, in fact, you know, we're staggering having people coming in at different times to perhaps raise this issue. So I think perhaps the city council or city managers are perhaps not aware of the severity or the kind of concern people are having. Well, let me get to the very specific issues that, there's about 30 households that have come together to discuss three specific items. This came out of this office hour held by Dr. Liang Chow, Vice Mayor, just about a month ago. And there's three things we'd like to ask that are relatively straightforward. One, can we increase the minimum residence requirement to have a setback from residences to cell sites to be 100? Our current guideline only asks for 20. But on the other hand, the current guideline recommends 100 feet setback from schools and playgrounds. Well, why would we not apply this logic to residences? Because the homes are the schools, as you know, some of my fellow residents have pointed out. This is a fact we have to deal with. So I can also cite, you know, places such as Calabasas, Petaluma, that have setbacks that are 500 to 1,000, 1,500 feet. Mill Valley has a no residential zone installation ordinance. So our requirement of 20 feet from residences seems just meager and inadequate compared to most cities that are acting on this matter. Number two, require 5G cell sites to be 500 feet apart, whether they're from any carrier. Today, we say it's from the same carrier. So logically, we should just say cell towers are cell towers. They should be carrier anonymous. So that's the second ask, pretty straightforward. These are two, two asks that are based on logic, based on our current intended guidelines, but making them consistent and logical across the board. And lastly, I just want to say that because 5G is a new technology, we're all for it. But at the same time, I think the city needs to put into place provisional permits for the next three years so that we can learn what everybody's doing over the next two years and make a sound decision that are more permanent, but that's data-driven so that we become a savvy community in doing the right thing for things that residents are concerned about. So here, I probably represent about 30 households that I've spoken to, but each household brings to me probably about 17, 20 households that they've talked to. So I wouldn't be surprised if you're hearing about 100 residents that are already very concerned, and I hope you'll take on immediate action as previous speakers have asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Our next speaker is Rose, I'm sorry, our next speaker is Lisa Warren, followed by Rose Grimes, followed by Tian Hung 2. Welcome, Lisa.
Hello, thank you. So just to echo Peter's thoughts, which I did the last time he spoke, and I think he may be referring to me when I mentioned it's, homes are now schools for that request or ask for 100-foot space, but I, that evening, I was speaking off the cuff, and I agree with what I said, but I also did not add that homes are always playgrounds. You know, the schools in homes may be temporary, but homes are always playgrounds. So it's doubled down the reason to increase that distance if at all possible. And then what I really wanted to say tonight was just, now that we have new council, new mayor and vice mayor moving forward, there are some agenda requests that I have made for the last two years that I know somewhere on the work program, some may not be, but I just don't want them to lose priority or get lost in the weeds. And those are doing anything and everything, have a discussion about housing bills, the new one's coming, and what action can be taken to protect what can be protected once any of those may be approved and voted on by Assembly and Senate. So that's one, but I don't want that to get lost, and in fact, it should be an ongoing thing. And also, the R1 improvements to municipal code related to privacy planting guidelines and balconies, that has to be addressed. Please, 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 don't let it slip. And another one, there's more, but I'm only gonna do these three. Parkland distribution citywide based on resident population, including anticipated or approved projects. So that's it.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Rose Grimes, followed by Tian Hung 2, followed by Rajul Pandit. Welcome, Rose.
Hey, thanks so much. I'm surprised I didn't think of this originally myself, but the idea of giving a commendation to the Cupertino library staff, what a great idea. As a former library commissioner and currently a board member of the Santa Clara County Library Foundation, I am so thrilled to hear that suggestion from the community. I, I think I hardly need to tell most of you, city council members, how central the library is to the life of the community, to the attempts of so many families to be schooling their kids during the pandemic and, you know, I could go on and on, but I won't. I really endorse the idea of giving a commendation. I think probably the speaker was not 100% aware of how the, the County Library District operates these community libraries, six or seven of them, maybe it's nine, I've lost count. But anyway, I, I know that the management of the County Library District would be thrilled to hear that kind of feedback from the city council. And the council members have been very generous over the years in recognizing the efforts of the library. So it would be completely in keeping with where I know your hearts are. So I just endorse that, that suggestion. I think that's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Rose. Our next speaker is Tian Hung 2, followed by Rajul Pandit, followed by Raj Sayana. Welcome, Tian Hung.
Hi, hi, everyone. I'm Tian Hung. So I've been a Cupertino resident for six years since I moved to the Bay Area. I'm here to raise my big concern about the Verizon 5G station that's, that's proposed to be built near my home. I'm speaking on behalf of my eight-months baby and all of my neighbors, including 17 infants and kids. You know, this new 5G station is, is proposed to be only 25 feet away from my neighbor and only 50 feet away from my home. 20, 25 feet is like the length of the minivan. It's extremely close. Okay, and our baby, they're going to expose in this high radiation 24/7, especially in this stay-at-home scenario. So it's, it's definitely going to be a potential health hazard. So our Cupertino guideline for the school and playground is 100 feet. Why it's only 20 feet away from the resident? And compared to the other cities, for example, like Los Angeles, the minimum distance is 1,000 feet. Like compared to the other city, it means our kids, they are exposed to 100,000. And you are hearing me, you are hearing me correct. It's 100,000 more radiation than the other cities. I think this is not acceptable. So I also like speak, spoke along with Peter last week. So I, I, I really here to plead to the city council, please take actions. So we, we, we really need to, need to make these new 5G stations away from the residents because our kids, the, the, as, as previously said, the home is the, is the playground for, for our kids, right? So they're going to be here 24/7. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tian Hung. Our next speaker is Rajul Pandit, followed by Raj Sayana, followed by a phone number ending 8453. Welcome, Rajul.
Hello, can you hear me? Thank you. My name is Rajul Pandit. Thank you for taking my call, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council. I am a resident of Cupertino since 2001. I am a parent, a mother of two boys, and I am a radiologist. I'm very well aware of radiation hazards. That's basically my occupation. My point today is just to echo every sentiment that has been said thus far so eloquently by others, including Peter Chu, about the high, high level of concern about these 5G cell towers that are going up. Ours was one of the households that received that flyer from Verizon, that tower is going up. You know, and, and we, I did not even realize how the significance of it until we started talking about it amongst neighbors. And now, what, what I really want to emphasize, I'm not going to repeat all that has already been said about different things that can be done to mitigate this. At least a minimum of 100 feet away from residences is, is, is on what we are asking, what other cities are also planning, other progressive cities are planning. But what, what I'm hearing and understanding is that clearly the residents of Cupertino are motivated. We're talking, we are getting together. This has become a very sensitive issue among so many of us. What, what today is about is, is how can we make this an urgent priority with the city council? How can we, what do we need to do as citizens to make it clear to the city council that this is an extremely important matter to us residents? And while we want the advanced technology of 5G, we do not want these cell towers in our backyards and front yards and definitely not keeping the minimum distance away from residences, at least 100 feet away, as is done by other cities. That's all. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Rajul. Our next speaker is Raj Sayana, followed by a caller with number ending 8453, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Raj.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
I'm echoing the sentiments of all the speakers ahead of me that, you know, spoke about the 5G and 4G installations in our neighborhoods. And we don't want to be the first ones to adopt And we don't want to be the first ones to adopt a new technology, especially those with a very high radiation, as pointed by others. So I urge the city council to take some action in this matter. As somebody has pointed out, the number of installations have more than doubled, I guess. So I'd appreciate, you know, some action from the city council. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Raj. Our next speaker is a caller with number ending eight four five three, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome. And for our phone number ending eight four five three, if you can hear me, you will need to hit star nine on your phone.
Star, star six, mayor.
Oh, thank you very much.
Unmute.
So caller ending eight four five three, you'll have to hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself.
Hello, hello. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, councilman. I am here to speak about the rate increase for ecology. So I am a Cupertino resident for last nineteen years.
I'm sorry, I, I need to cut you off. That is an agendized item that is agendized later. We are now talking about oral communications, which is for items that are not on our agenda. So if you'd like to speak on that, you'll have to call back. I believe that item is item number, number thirteen. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Welcome, new mayor, vice mayor, council members. I want to reiterate and, and stress upon you, if you have not seen the oral communications of the previous planning commission meeting regarding the cell towers, you need to, to watch that. And I also want to reiterate what Peter and Lisa had said about the three items that minimum that you should consider. Also, a fourth should be that you prioritize the installation in business areas first, such as along Stevens Creek, Indiana Boulevard, over the housing. This is really serious stuff, and it affects our residents. So please, put it on an agenda soon and address this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. That concludes our oral communications for this evening. We are on to items five and six, which are reports by council and staff. To give you notice, we, we started at five-thirty. So following this, we'll be taking a five-minute break before the consent calendar. But item number five is an update for our emergency response efforts by our city manager. Welcome, Deb.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. My report is hopefully quick today. And I just want to, I'll be emphasizing things about vaccines and testing, et cetera, because I think people want to hear about that stuff. As we all know, we're deep into the purple tier of the state's public health framework. Where we're somewhat different is in the county, at the county level, we're looking at nonessential travel being limited to within one hundred and fifty miles. And if you go outside the region, which is considered the county, we would, you would have to self, mandatory self-quarantine for fourteen days upon your return. There have been twenty-four deaths due to COVID today. That's eight times the average of three. So we are definitely on our way up, a, a big spike here. The county is down to thirteen percent of ICU capacity. And if you recall, their metric for going into purple was fifteen percent. Healthcare workers, I'm sorry, are exempted from the travel order. They have set up a county code enforcement task force that I have spoken about before, a group of approximately twenty individuals who are focusing on business violations and the, of the public health orders. They are issuing administrative citations. And we recently received data that there have been ninety-four complaints on businesses within Cupertino with two citations, which is not horrible. Basically tells you that we're pretty much in compliance. So I think that's a good metric. For testing and vaccines, countywide, we're now doing about fourteen thousand tests a day, which is really good. However, Dr. Cody today said in a very serious message that we are not going to be able to test our way out of this particular spike. It, it's pretty bad. We do have a testing opportunity tomorrow. Fortunately, all of the appointments are taken. It's at the senior center, same time, nine-thirty to three forty-five, all day long by appointment. And fortunately, people are taking that seriously. We're not advertising any walk-ins right now because they are at capacity. There are, I'm going to move into what I know about the vaccines, vaccine opportunities. There are approximately a hundred and thirty thousand healthcare workers in Santa Clara County. There are seventeen thousand five hundred Pfizer doses coming to the county right about now, by the end of the week. This is a two-dose, twenty-one-day-apart regimen. So to be effective, people have to take both doses. Other organizations are receiving vaccine doses independently from, from federal sources, like the Veterans Administration, which makes perfect sense. Skilled nursing facilities will be prioritized, both workers and residents. And the reason for that is there's forty-five percent of the deaths are occurring in skilled nursing facilities, but only five percent of the cases are occurring there. So there's like spreader events going on. The residents of these skilled nursing facilities will be administered the vaccines through CVS and Walgreens by the federal government. I don't know how that's going to work. There's some skepticism there, but that's the current plan. Following on the Pfizer vaccine, there are thirty-nine thousand doses of the Moderna vaccine to be delivered to the county by, we'll say, by the end of the month. That too is a two-dose regimen. The difficulty with both of these vaccines is they need to be kept at very cold temperatures. The Pfizer vaccine needs to be kept at a negative seventy, seventy Celsius. And I believe the Moderna vaccine needs to be kept at freezing temperatures. They will go directly to hospitals for the healthcare workers. We need about seventy percent of the population to be vaccinated, to have what's called herd immunity, so that the other precautions that we're taking can be relaxed a bit. And that is the physical distancing, face coverings, and all the other precautions we've all been taking since the start of the pandemic. The county, because their span of control is being really tested with the numbers of people they have, they are asking each city to help them with what's called an ambassador program. Starting on December nineteenth, there's going to be training in English, and other languages will be taught as well as we roll out this program. This program is, is primarily an education and outreach program to talk to people about the vaccines, the availability, the importance of social distancing and face covering, because we don't have enough arms and legs for that. So far, the city has submitted twenty-eight names of community leaders, including many of our commissioners that have volunteered. It will take approximately two hours a week, they're estimating. It's hard to really estimate because it is dependent upon how many people volunteer for it. I've put council's name on the list because you're community members, but you'll be contacted if there's training available, and then you will go to training if you so choose. Again, it's, it's largely an education and outreach effort, and we are targeting community leaders in our area to be able to speak to some of the information being put out by the county. In Cupertino, there are three hundred and twenty-two cases of COVID in the city-by-city and three hundred and sixteen cases by zip code. This is up by ninety since the last city council meeting. Ninety cases in two weeks. That's really high for us. And I hate to be always the one of bear, the bearer of bad news, it seems like. Some good news is that in Parks and Recreation, to adapt to the COVID environment, we had a drive-in Santa event that went very well over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of last week. A hundred and forty-four families came to visit Santa. And I want to thank our Parks and Recreation staff for supporting the event in the rain. They really helped the families feel like it's at least the holiday season. And of course, our Zoom with Santa events will continue. We had to reschedule one due to COVID-like symptoms on Santa's staff. So just, you know, trying to keep everybody healthy. In law enforcement, from the city perspective, the sheriff has been doing focused outreach and education for the public health order. There is some confusion between the county's code enforcement group, task force, and sheriff, because sheriff is really meant for criminal law enforcement versus civil citations. So we're trying to keep those things separated. But more on that, because that's kind of an emerging process. On the homeless encampment, I wanted to provide the latest update from, there have been significant changes since the last city council meeting. The latest information I have today is that ten out of the fifteen of the original encampment members have taken housing, and there are three at the outside location. Two are not locatable. So we call that in the wind. They're, they've gone somewhere. One is double counted as he has a hotel room and a tent at the outdoor site in order to provide him with more time to get through his belongings and eventually move to the hotel room. The county will continue outreach with him and the other members at the outdoor location. Nine new people showed up due to the offerings that, and what this means is they're not registered in the county system. It indicates to me that perhaps there's illegal evictions happening or something else happening within the county where people are migrating over. One was a veteran and was immediately eligible for veterans' housing program. One woman was pregnant and received immediate outreach from Valley Medical. She is now in shelter and receiving medical attention. Two were at the outside location, and the other five people have either dispersed or have been on-boarded to other county programs that I do not have specific information on at this time. These numbers are not precise. So if there are changes that I find out about, I, of course, will update the summary as appropriate. And we're almost at the point of finalizing the city's agreement with about the housing provider. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Deb. I'll allow some brief questions if we have any from our council. Are there any? I don't see any hands up. Councilmember Willie.
Yes. You know, I, I see so much concern by the residents on the cell towers, of which I understand that. So I'd like to mention that I think several of their statements truly need to be looked at by staff. We'll talk about this at the end of the meeting, but when the residents are here, they should hear what, what we might be able to do. One being that the other communities are not being so dramatically impacted by these cells, the number of cells. Number two, the cells being at one hundred feet in other communities and away from schools. And then there was a third item about one of the communities that I think has a moratorium or something. So later on, we can talk about it, but let the residents know, yes, we, we should be asking staff to look in to these different things so that, oh, prioritizing cells in the business areas. So telling Verizon, focus on the business areas, not the residential to start with. So good, that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So I, I think next time, I, I probably won't open it up as a questions because we want to make the questions, if we have any relevant to the city manager's update. But I do hear what you're saying with regard to wanting to respond to some of the, the, the public commentary following oral communications more, more timely. I'll, I'll work with the city manager and the city attorney about what we could potentially be doing along those lines. But let's move on to item number six at this point. I don't see any other further raised hands. And I, I would expect this to be quite brief since two of our new council members simply don't have committee assignments yet. And so this is item number six, our report on committee assignments. Also, this being December, they tend to be a little bit less scheduled out in this month. But does anybody, either Vice Mayor Chow or Councilmember Willie, with your hand up, have any reports out on our committee assignments?
Well, I'm happy to go first. So with Councilman Sinks having retired from the city council, I'm taking over, at least so far, for Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And there's a couple of important points. So we had a meeting on the ninth and a couple of important points. So first, for people that are customers of Silicon Valley Clean Energy, they are going to be seeing their rates going to go up. Currently, they're four percent below what PG&E charges, but PG&E is going to be raising their rates, and our rates, Silicon Valley Clean Energy rates would be going up proportionally. And some of that four percent delta that they've enjoyed is going to have to take up some of that increase by PG&E. So just realize that those increases are coming. They feel there may be a slight decrease in the month, I think they said February, but that it would be back to the other higher rate in March. Second one, Silicon Valley Clean Energy is working to form a JPA to get bigger economies of scale than they can get just on their own when they're making these purchases of clean power for their customers. And so those, those are what Councilman Sinks would have been reporting on. I want to keep his momentum going. And so that's my report for this week.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. We have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So I have one committee assignment. It's Santa Clara, Santa Cruz Airport Roundtable. San Francisco Airport is looking into a new arrival procedure and that will likely increase their capacity in a way also to deal with their specific geological and weather limitations. And they are looking into getting public comments in March, by March. And the next roundtable meeting on January twenty-seventh, we will be collecting public comments so that we can submit to San Francisco Airport. So this new arrival might affect areas that Palo Alto want to view, not quite Cupertino, a little bit of Sunnyvale. So in case people are interested that they should attend, watch out for the website on the roundtable.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. I did have one committee assignment, and that was the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee that met last Thursday on December tenth. It was largely administrative and procedural. This is the time of the year where there is a turnover in the leadership. So outside of talking about the procedure for selecting a future chair and vice chair, there were, there were some, some administrative updates, but no, nothing to elaborate upon at this point. I, I think, as we all know, VTA PAC did have some significant activity with regard to looking at the allocation of Measure B funding and trying to achieve some equity between our, our largest jurisdictional stakeholder and the rest of the jurisdictions covered by, by VTA. So that's, that's moving in real time. And we do have very dedicated work coming from our staff, as well as council, in ensuring that we don't have, you know, basically the entirety of funding for Measure B tax dollars going into downtown San Jose for the bar extension and that they remember the other eight or so buckets of funding, including our roads, for instance, and maintenance to the other cities that were promised this fund. uh, including our roads, uh, for instance, and maintenance, uh, to the other cities that, uh, were promised this funding under Measure B. So, um, with that, I'll go ahead and, uh, call a five-minute break. It's approximately eight twenty-four right now. So we'll go ahead and reconvene at eight-thirty, uh, with our consent calendar. Thank you. We'll see you in five minutes.